Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, Downtown Alariah. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome back. Dear Lord, as we come to you this morning, thanking you for the opportunity for the Commissioners and their team to get together to discuss business for Lorraine County, we thank you that we have the Veterans Commission here. We, I thank you for the veterans. You never know, Lord, how important that is until your family members are in military service and they, some come back home and some don't, so we, we thank you for their service and what they do for us. And we just thank you, Lord, that the Commissioners will have a good meeting and rest of the end of the year and they need to tie up the loose ends that, you know, are hanging over their heads and just continue to give them the wisdom and knowledge that they need to make the right decisions, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thanks, Bev. Good morning and welcome to the December 10th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Kaloe has our little puppy from the kennel today. I thought she liked you, Ted.
She did. I think she's shy out here. Come here. Come here. There we go. Our featured dog this week is about an eight-month-old female brown lab, chocolate lab. She was found in Pittsfield. She'll be available for adoption December 13th. How many dogs we have now, Tim?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven dogs. Great personality, nice and friendly, huh? Show 'em. Yeah, yeah, there you go.
Aww.
I think our Veteran Service Commissioners ought to have a mascot at the office. Okay. If she's not quite your type of dog, stop down and grab one of our others.
Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
No advan-- excuse me, no advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Oh, you know what? Oh, yes, we do have to.
Yeah, we have to.
Yeah. Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Commissioner Kaloe. I do have a number of personnel issues. Job Family Services, Golden Acres. Also, want to update you, I did meet with the steelworkers on our ongoing labor negotiations at the 911 agency, also potential sale and purchase of real estate and ongoing legal issues. All those topics are below, under the Sunshine Act for Executive Session Discussion, so to ask it to conclusion of our regular board meetings, hey, we go into executive session and discuss those items that I've outlined. Thank you.
Approve and waive the reading in the Commissioners Minutes of December 3rd?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Authorize salary adjustments for Lorraine Municipal Court effective January 1st, 2015, which reflects the county's due share. Judge Mark Mihawk administrative, biweekly rate of $973.08 and Judge Thomas Elwell, presiding, biweekly rate of 950.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Community Development authorize an enter and MOA with members of Lorraine County Brownfield Coalition in order to draw funds from the USCPA Brownfield Assessment Grant at work in Lorraine County.
Don?
Thank you, Board. This is first of three resolutions before you all dealing with the USCPA Brownfield Grant for $600,000 that we applied for and received as a coalition working with the cities of Lorraine and Avon Lake, North Ridgeville, Oberlin, and Wellington. This MOA actually confirms now the coalition and is a requirement of the grant agreement and respectfully request that you pass.
Commissioners, you know, we were going to do this under my business, but we have the consulting firms here, Don and I had talked about it. I really just wanted you to meet them and I had met with them, I'm very comfortable with the work they're going to be doing with us and some of these are new partnerships, so I thought it'd be nice if they were here. So if Don wants to bring them up, maybe we can just at least visually see each other.
And we've actually entered into, well, we're proposing to enter into two contracts, one with Hull and Associates and the others with Partners Environmental to be able to expend approximately $500,000 in environmental assessment. And so I'll allow them to introduce themselves.
Okay.
Wonderful.
Thanks.
Good morning. My name is Karen Selly. I'm with Hull and Associates. I've been with them about 12 years. We're an environmental consulting firm in Ohio. We have an office in Indianapolis, also in Pittsburgh. It's a pleasure to meet you.
Familiarity with through all these grants. Familiarity with all these grants and...
With the USCPA grant. Yes, I'm currently, currently working on two of them and there are two of them that I worked on previously that have reached the end of their expiration.
Karen's had to tweet off, she's going to be our person from the company on the ground here in Lorraine County, so...
So we'll see you all the time.
Yes.
Wonderful. Like to know who's walking through the building.
John Garvey with Partners Environmental. I'm a Director of Brownfield and Remediation Services. I've been consulting for about 28 years, been with Partners for the last eight. We have been working on the USCPA Assessment Grants, probably pretty consistently on one or more for the last 10 or so years.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rick Vince with Partners Environmental. I'm the Project Manager for this grant. I've been with Partners for about nine years and the business for about 15, so I'm very familiar with the program and seeing the projects from start to finish, seeing them through.
All right, let's get through the testing and move forward on the projects as well to go. This is, we're thankful we got that grant.
Mm-hmm. Thanks.
I'm so moved. Oh, I'm sorry, Jim.
I can't, you know, I want to take just a moment to once again reiterate how proud I am of the Community Development Partner for pulling this coalition together and making this a reality. The, the weight of our grant application that allowed us to achieve success was based very strongly on the fact that we had multiple jurisdictions that came into alignment with the same view for what we could do in this community. We need to continue to, to ramp that, that type of coalition together to bring additional resources back to Lorraine County. This is a preparatory grant that we're going to be doing all the work on, but once we get, start getting through this, we got to get money to actually do the work.
Do the work, yeah.
And, and as Don Romancheck reminded me last week, many of these things were done in other jurisdictions that remain nameless and sat on shelves for years, never to see any funding to get the work done. So we got to continue to build the coalition, continue to hold it close and tight together and continue to provide that leadership so that we can, we can take another step along the highway towards getting some actual work done in some of these brownfields.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I will move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Authorize an enter and MOU with Lorraine County Health District for, for it to perform data collection on behalf of Lorraine County Brownfield Coalition.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Authorize an enter and contract with Partners Environmental Consulting, Inc. and Hull and Associates, Inc. for the purpose of conducting activities on behalf of Lorraine County Brownfield Coalition as it performs tasks under a USCPA Brownfield Assessment Grant.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Solid Waste approve extension of contract with Liberty Tire Recycling LLC Minerva for operation of the scrap tire collection program effective January 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2015, with a renewal option for one year to be paid from the scrap tire account.
Mr. Bailey?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Liberty Tire's been with us quite a few years. Fact is, they took over when they bought out Central High Contractors many years ago. We're still holding the same prices, 106 a ton on passenger tires and two ton on ag, so able to do that for another year. And they have, this is the first extension of their contract, all right?
Wonderful. Great program. I'll move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Engineer Amendment Resolution 14205 adopted in March 26, 2014, in the amount of $409,349 for trans system to provide coordination, construction, administration, inspection services, the LOR State Route 57, 9.09 Grafton Road Reconstruction Project in Village of Grafton. Said amendment is to approve a modification, number one, in the amount of $53,262.50 for utility coordination, storm sewer redesigns, water main alignment changes, and extended hours for weekend and overtime as a result of the schedule. Authorize engineer to execute documents on behalf of the Board with Prosecutor's approval as to form, and 80% will be paid from ODOT and balance from Village of Grafton.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Accept on behalf of Columbia Township Trustees, the improvements and enter in a one-year maintenance guarantee for Columbia Reserve Subdivision Number 1, 2, and 3. Rich Behren is the developer. The storm sewer, sanitary sewers, and asphalt payment were installed and accepted and accept the following roads to be part of the township as recorded in record clouds. Reserve Way, Road Number T-317 commencing at Snow Road, T-129 and extending south and curving west and then north 2,890.32 feet or 0.547 miles in length, ending at Lake Ridge Way, T-318. Lake Ridge Way and Road Number T-318 commencing at Reserve Way, T-317 and extending west and curving southeast 2,118.40 feet or 0.401 miles in length, extending at Westwood Boulevard, T-319 in cul-de-sac. Westwood Boulevard with Road Number T-319 commencing at Snow Road, T-129 and extending south 1,209.19 feet or 0.229 miles in length, ending at Lake Ridge Way, T-318 in a cul-de-sac. And then West Bend Court with Road Number T-320 commencing at Lake Ridge Way, T-318 and extending north then curving northwest 2,75.05 feet or 0.090 miles in length, ending in a cul-de-sac.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Prosecutor Treasurer, Accept and Journalized Adjudice Act, Appropriation Expenditure Report is submitted by Lorraine County Treasurer and Lorraine County Prosecutor pursuant to Hybris Code 321.261 for the year 2015. Revenue generated for 2014 was $801,250.08 and 2015 estimate of anticipated revenue will be approximately $700,000. Tax unit, the Prosecutor's Office, has expended $374,216 and anticipates another $30,000 by the end of the year. Treasurer spent $361,335.27 out of $456,765 appropriated.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kaloe?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, I don't remember if I said under the executive session I need to talk about ongoing litigation. I want to update you on that with regards to, to the courts, so I need to make that clear.
Well, if I can chime in there some, Jim. This has been an ongoing battle for, I don't know, eight, nine months, maybe extending a years back, and we've always had the third location that Commissioner Kokoski has been proposing, the Broad Street, Middle Avenue property.
Right.
Off of the alley and the gates. I actually took the time last week, had some renderings done about how it would clean up to actually get a feel of it. I actually did speak to Dan Kleimerson, his manager Chuck DeAngelo. We took a tour of the property, walking around where it would locate at, no disruption to his business. He loved the plans. I've got renderings here.
Were those the ones we had completed from Clark and Post?
Correct, from Clark and Post.
I have other copies of those here.
Do you? Okay. Projected cost around a million dollars or so. I did have an extended conversation with Mayor Brenda about it also. She understood financially where things go sometimes because she's got enough issues of her own, working on her budget, but to, this probably won't deal with the court case we have now, because that's the budgeting of security for the sheriffs to do, the two probation departments, but this should take it off the table. And I think I'll move forward with Commissioner Kokoski on redoing the Broad Street, Middle Avenue building.
Well, we've talked about it, it's been in play for quite a while.
I mean, in the case of the courthouse, I really want to save that, but I think going forward, if we're working on this building, we can then form hopefully a 501(c)(3). There's been interest in saving the old courthouse. I've talked to former Judge Stricklyano, he's wanted to be involved over the past. Probably Mr. Byrd from Lorraine County Historical Society and work on putting together a friends of the county courthouse to work on saving that over the next decade or so, if the Board would agree.
Sure, I mean, you know, if you look at what's been done at the lighthouse, what's been done at the Palace Theater and other communities for buildings of significant historical value that, that represent importance to future generations, providing the leadership to develop a 401(c)(3) foundation where they can spend the next several years, because it would take a very long period of time. I think you were on the Palace Board early on in the 90s.
That's about a decade there.
And you know what a slug that was to try to get enough resources lined up to even do one job at a time. But, but some, somewhere the process has to start. Clearly, the, the building is, is not going to be able to be brought back to complete historical perspective, but maybe certain portions of it can be restored and it can be a minor showpiece for Lorraine County, similar to what the Historical Society's done at the mansion down on, on Washington Avenue.
Well, they've had a lot of things to spur that on, though, and I think I sent you the link on it. Ohio News Network, 10 days ago, two weeks ago, is going to do a 88 county courthouse expose on courthouses, where they're at, remodeled ones, decorated ones, and they're going to broadcast them once a week going through the 88 counties. And then we, this weekend was the Commissioners Conference, so we got to talk a lot of Commissioners, small county, large county, on their historic courthouses.
Well, they think they're going to do 88, but...
They're going to do 87, because Seneca Towers down a few years ago, yeah. Very good friend of mine, Ben Nutter, lost his job over it, so...
But, but I, obviously, there's some things we need to do, but that type of leadership will take, you know, some time and effort to develop with community and leaders and people that have value to bring just because they're interested in preserving these type of structures. The renderings I gave you of the Broad Street building, the cost are proposed, I would...
I prefer it as the Middle Avenue building because the entrance will be on Middle Avenue.
It will be changed to Middle Avenue. There's a couple, couple of small hurdles, as I told the Board before.
I talked to Mayor Brenda about cleaning up that alley because that is the Sidis Alley and...
The, you know, we have employee parking on one side, but I, you mentioned the million dollars. I anticipate the cost being closer to 1.2, though.
Okay, well, yeah, we were roughing whatever the renderings were, correct.
And like any time you do a renovation, I don't believe there's a lot of unknowns here, because the, the building was pretty open.
Right.
But, but there's still some of that potential. We didn't build in a lot of extra dollars for, you know, unforeseen conditions, but I think they should be...
But the floor plan matches what the courts are asking us for in regards to...
I, I matched it as best I could from what they had aligned for the Justice Center. I mean, we've, Tom, you've asked me to realign that floor plan two or three times, I have, and, and I believe you, you along with other Commissioners had suggested the Middle Avenue approach to the, to the entrance there.
Well, we wanted to try to...
Keep it off the Broad Street.
Yeah. Make, you know, we wanted the mayor to be comfortable with it, so we tried to accommodate some of her concerns about people being out on Broad Street, so I'm just glad that we're going to move forward with this. And I know, Ted, you wanted it to be in the courthouse all along and, you know, I had Tom's support there for a while with the Broad Street building and then he went back to the 5th floor. So I just think this is the best opportunity for the permanent solution for the adult probation department. It's all on one floor, we're not, you don't have to worry about, you know, elevators and things of that nature. Parking is like the huge thing. They have like 36 employees that are parking over in between here and, and, you know, in front of the courthouse and the Justice Center. Now they'll all be back behind this building, so I think it's going to free up a lot of parking issues that we have downtown Alariah.
It will, because we already own the lot.
Right.
It's just being underutilized because of its geographical location with respect to the job locations right now.
No, I just want to clarify on something. I was supportive of going through in order to try to come up with a solution with the judges. I still believe that the 5th floor makes the most sense as far as you're not duplicating security services that you're going to have over at the Broad Street or whatever.
The sheriff said if we were in, if we brought all those people into the 5th floor of the Justice Center, that we'd still need like additional security. It was kind of a wash.
It would be a wash.
I mean, the two locations with the courthouse and the PSI building is duplicate, but if everybody, PSI and adult probation are in the Broad Street building, it'll be a wash from what we're...
Yeah.
What would be needed at the Justice Center?
But, I mean, it's a good alternative plan. I think, again, as I stated throughout the entire time, I think having a true hall of justice makes sense, but...
Jim, do you want to talk about possible video conferencing and things? Because we were talking about like, how many times do the adult probationers and the probationers have to go to the courthouse?
One of the concerns was that occasionally, and some of these were occasionally, maybe it's more than that, I don't want to get anybody's feathers ruffled, you know, across the street again, but there is, there is a need to have sometimes probationers brought to the, to the judge's courtroom or however they do it, because there may be a violation there, maybe needs to be a resentencing or an order back to incarceration. I don't know all the terms completely, but I have listened to, you know, the dialogue and similar to what we do with, with arraigning inmates from the jail, they do that by video conferencing. We have a microwave link, we can do it the same way from that building, therefore the transfer of, of people that become less, they, the movement becomes less, and, and we don't, they don't have to deal with, with that, that issue that they do now. And they, they, it's a problem now, and I will tell you that it became known to me about two months ago, maybe a little less, about, I thought the, I still think the office space is adequate, but not desirable, but the movement flow in there is not good.
Over at the courthouse?
Yes.
Oh, I know, it's not good.
And it's one thing to look at a space and, and look at it and say, okay, you know, it could be a lot better, but, but again, not...
The way it's been designed, it's not designed for offices.
But the workflow, the workflow for those folks is not good.
Right.
And, and I really wasn't cognizant of that a few months back, of how disjointed the, the workflow was.
Yeah.
And so, you know, that, that's a problem over there, one that would take a significant amount of time to rethink the strategy of how to move the work process most efficiently. And you'll have ample, ample ability to do that. I suggest the floor plates that we have, we send them over to courts and ask them to comment on those and take a look at them. They're only, they're only suggestions of, of what should be there, and we should have further dialogue with them to, you know, to see how we can develop that floor plate with the most efficient workflow.
One thing I wanted to bring up real quick was, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is with the video monitoring, sometimes the actual adult probation officer is required to be physically in the courtroom where they're not able to use the video, video monitoring which they use for like arrangements of individuals who are being brought up on charges. Am I correct in that statement?
That would be true in some cases. I'm just up here to say that the judges welcome a dialogue.
Wonderful.
Asking for it and...
Hope they work with us and make this a very good building for them.
I'm sure they will work with you in any way that they need to.
Thanks, Deb, appreciate it. Anything else, Jim? No, I, I will have contact with, with Mr. Looby and, and send him over some of the information. I hope this is productive dialogue and, and, and not obstructionist dialogue. The, the, I know when people really want to make something work, it works. If they, if either party doesn't, then it usually doesn't. So I'm hopeful and I'm optimistic, but let me, let me clearly state this, this doesn't end our litigation. I still need to brief you on that. That's a separate issue with regard to orders of funding that we believe were inappropriate. And, and two weeks ago, I, I listened very intently to what the judge had to say here. I think he spoke eloquently. However, the, the issue appeared that we had control of whether those dollars were spent on the litigation and we do not. They have the ability to withdraw those orders or cease that behavior and our litigation ends. So I believe that they're more in control of that than this Board of Commissioners are. You're responding, you're not, you're not taking the original action, you're reacting. So I, I don't know if that was clear, but I don't want to leave, leave it hanging out there that, that you, you are going to be making those decisions whether that progresses or not. It's a little more than I thought I was going to have under my business. I think we're under my business, right?
Yes.
I have no additional comments this morning.
Thank you.
Mr. Enos?
I have no other legal problems for you.
Oh, that's good.
Commissioners report.
First of all, I want to say congratulations to Brandy Schnell from our Solid Waste Department. Her and her husband just had a baby girl the other day and they've been looking forward to having a baby for a long time. Like Ted said, we just got back from the winter conference in Columbus and I want to thank Teresa for driving. She's a great driver. And also congratulations to Teresa, she just became the President of the Clerks Association, so congratulations to you, Teresa.
You've done it before, haven't you?
Not president.
Just president now.
She's president.
I told you at a poobah once or something, weren't you?
She is the poobah. She's really the poobah now. We received four more MOUs for the Emergency Notification System, Alariah, Sheffield Lake, Brownhelm Township, and Wellington Township. I'm hoping every week we'll get more.
Commissioner, I understand Lorraine has taken theirs under consideration and that it should be coming very soon. The big one is I want to thank Alariah, it was, it's a large step. They're going to save considerable money.
Right.
But, but it's, it's really starting to bring us closer together with issues on 911 and the things we're packaging. And then when we, when Lorraine comes on board, you know, clearly we'll have the majority And then when Lorraine comes on board, you know, clearly we'll have the majority of the population covered under this new system and then we'll sweep up the smaller jurisdictions. I think they'll be involved too.
Yeah, well, probably just the ones that are under contract with another vendor may, you know, take some time to move over to our system, but hopefully eventually everybody in the county will be on board with that and saving a lot of money for their constituents. Friday, I had my natural resource assistance council and we had six projects that we had to rank. We were about $440,000 short, so all the entities had an opportunity to reduce their ask by 84% or something like that. So we're still waiting to see, every single one of them had to be okay with that and there weren't decision makers at the, at the meeting, so they had to go back to their prospective boards or whatever to get that okay. So we had, Montville Township had a Blue Heron Park project, Medina County Park District, Rocky River Corridor acquisition, Lorraine County Metro Parks had a castle reservation extension, Western Reserve Land Conservancy had the Great South Woods project, Lorraine County Metro Parks had a Holstein Reservation Extension Project, and the Cleveland Museum of Natural History had the Cox Forest Expansion. So we were there for quite a long time, but I did make it to my District Nine Ohio Public Works Committee and we had our integrating committee that day. Ted, they wanted to make sure that you knew that you needed an alternate, because I know you don't usually miss those meetings, but you were spread pretty thin that day. And so if you can get an alternate, they'd appreciate that.
Okay.
And I think that's all I have to report.
Congratulations, Lorraine County Community Alliance had their annual meeting. Congratulations to County Engineers Employee and Aleria Township trustee Bill Altman, winning the Mike Whitmore Award.
Congratulations, Bill.
Nice job, nice event. Everybody was in. I actually got the opportunity to meet with Grace Calucci then after that meeting. It's tied up with, it was roadwork, it was public dollars. We're actually going to send out, we talked about, scheduled the end of January for all the political subdivisions in the county to hold a meeting here. We'll bring the Nowaka staff in along with Grace. We'll talk about the rehab money. Lorraine County has gotten shorted disproportionately based on the amount of rehab money out there. And we do have our transportation asset management plan.
Why don't we have it at the Transportation Center? What do you think?
I'll think about it.
Okay, sorry.
Doesn't like the sound.
It's changed.
Is it changed?
It's gotten better, yes.
It's gotten better.
But depending how many we have showups, we can do a presentation on it. But to have everybody, you know, our townships, villages and cities bring their issues when it comes to rehab money, we really have to work hard at getting that money back here in Lorraine County. A lot of counties are sucking up that money, building new. In our case, our older infrastructure is going bad as we heard through the Commissioners Association, meaning our legislative priorities. So we'll be holding a meeting here end of January, so we'll be sending out invitations to everyone. Also working on board appointments and such next year going in because I'll be president of the organization. Also, the Commissioners Association, we have our veterans here today. Sorry, you want to do anything up here in our presentation while I'm doing my report? Jose, how you doing? Got a chance, we did actually a session with Tim Gurrell in Columbus. Was that Monday morning, Tuesday morning?
Monday morning.
Monday morning.
Monday morning.
Was with Tim Gurrell. Nice discussion. We had a lot of things going on, discussion budgetary issues came up with all the commissioners sitting there always. But overall, he's got a nice direction moving forward and gentleman, actually one of our county commissioners, Paul Howler from Jackson County, 36-year retiree from the Navy. So he hosted the meeting, so. Go ahead, Jose. We'll let you go.
Well, you guys know who I am, I just let everybody else know, I'm one of the commissioners for Lorraine County Veteran Services, Jose Torres. The reason that I'm, that we came in today, you guys all have the paperwork, the veterans within the county came to us very upset about certain stuff that was printed in the newspaper by a certain commissioner making comments, Mr. Williams.
Oh.
So what I did before.
Did you give us that?
Did you make us?
Oh, no, this was in the newspaper. I can make copy if you guys want it.
Well, for the record, go ahead and state the, what the comment was.
I have them all highlighted. I'm getting ready to get to them.
Okay.
I didn't see the newspaper, Jose. You got me off guard.
But before we came and, you know, got upset, the other veterans came to us, we wanted to compile the actual numbers just to refute what was put in the paper, okay?
You don't have copy, you're going to have to refer all that stuff.
I have it right here. Well, the first one is they want to move out of job and family services, but when you look around the state, that is where the most veteran service officers are located, is what he stated, okay? We contacted all 88 counties, which is printed here. Nobody is in with job and family services but us and Putnam County because of how small they are, about going to our new building, which is all printed right here.
Okay, so let's, Commissioner Williams apparently made statements that.
Yes, and then he said that we only reach about 5% of 29,000 veterans. Well, the veterans we have in the county was from the 2010 census that we know and it's only 26,720. And last year, we reached 7,399 of them, which is a lot more than 5%.
Well, let's go back to that. When the, when the Veterans Commission was up here, that was their number that they threw out.
Okay. I mean, I'm not trying to slam you or nothing.
On there was about 5% because of the numbers that the Veterans Commission actually stated. Now, going through and looking at your numbers, you're stating here that you reached 41,000, or, I'm sorry, 4,151 walk-ins, phone calls and appointments.
For the logs kept.
Okay. Is that individual or is that multiple every time someone calls in? So if Mr. Smith called in three times, is that counted once or is that counted three times?
It's counted once.
Okay. And out of the 856 veterans, none of the, for the quarterly reports, none of those were the walk-ins?
No.
So those were 856?
Those were appointments.
No, this is claims filed.
Yes, to Columbus.
So out of the 4,000 people that called you, none of them, none of the 856 claims filed called you. You just filed them.
Those are the ones we had contact.
So that is part of the 4,151.
Yes.
Okay, so you can't add 856 on the 4,000 because you're counting those twice.
I understand it. That's why it's all broke down and, you know, it's.
But you're saying that you're adding all these up and you're coming up with 7,400 people, but you're counting these twice. Just value what you said. You said that claims filed for the 856.
That was a total contacts in the office.
Right, but you're adding that on top of the people who filed a claim as well. Those are still, those people who filed a claim.
But it's still more than 5% is, as you stated in the paper.
Well, I'm going, again, we can go back and we can pull that up. That was stated during a Veterans Commission hearing.
And I'm not trying to argue with you or nothing. I just want to get this out there because this was printed in the paper, Journal and the Chronicle, these comments that you made, Mr. Williams. And you said right here, Williams said veteran services receive .5 mils through a levy that generates up to 3.2 million. However, it is not guaranteed to the veterans like it is guaranteed to the schools.
That's right.
It is guaranteed to us.
Where?
It's a state law.
No, go through and take a look at the inside millage. The inside millage for the schools is guaranteed.
The veterans' money for the county is guaranteed.
There is 10 mils set aside for inside millage. Am I correct?
Our money is guaranteed.
No, hold on now. Let's go through this because we explained this.
I'll let you in a minute, Tomlin. You have the ability to spend up to one half of a mil, 3.1 million and change, correct? Based on the allowable services you're allowed to perform. You couldn't do it to go buy an ice cream stand.
No, I understand it, but the money is guaranteed to the veterans of the county.
Correct for veterans.
So to say it's not guaranteed is technically a false statement.
I didn't read it. I'm not looking at it, Jose. I was just trying to get the.
Okay.
Not defending anybody, just the explanation of, there's up to 3.1 million dollars and change out of the inside millage guaranteed the Veteran Services Commissioners, Commission to provide services for veterans. Correct. That is a correct statement on your part.
But there is not .5 mils of the 10 mil, inside mils, set aside.
No, it's not set aside.
It's not set aside. So you have to take the .5 mils of the 1.6 mils that goes into the general fund in order to pay for it. So what the statement was made was there is not .5 mils set aside for veteran services.
That's true.
No, I understand what he's saying. I just wanted to come back with what was said in the paper. Because they're making it look like they were not doing, I'm not doing my job as a commissioner, reaching out to these veterans.
Well, what's stated in the paper and what I stated here are two different things.
Then why even say this?
Again, what I would suggest you to do is actually go through and read the meeting meeting notes of what was stated.
I, I will, Mr. Williams.
Was that an article about one of our commissioners meetings, Jose? I don't even know.
Well, sometimes they call us after the meetings.
It was, it was when they came and talked about the new building. And it says, County Veteran Service Commission pushes for new location in Aleria. This one just said veterans leaders renew their call to, for a new office.
Oh, okay.
But it was the comments.
Thank you.
All right. Sorry about the comments.
And also, getting into it now, talking with, what was it, about a year, a year and a half ago, county auditor and the state auditor, at the end of the year, whatever money we don't use from our budget, we keep. It doesn't go back to the general fund. Legally, the county and the state auditor already cleared that. To start, 5901.15, which is the immediate assistance, any claims, any financial assistance unclaimed or anything, goes in our own account. We've been giving money back to the general fund, but it was about a year and a half ago, because I did the research, the state auditor said legally, we keep all that money. We don't have to give it back. And I just want to make that, just let that be known and we'll pull, I'll have it, I'll, you know, get a copy of that. I don't have it with me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? And also with the building, moving forward with the building, the Realtor called us and I just think, Mr. Cordez, you're 17-year Navy vet, correct?
20.
20? I, the Realtor called us and a lot of veterans weren't happy when they found out that you made the comment to the Realtor. And I hope you didn't make it stating that this building's a little too nice for the veterans.
No, that's not what the statement was. So, you know, if you had called me, I would have talked to you and the realtor.
Oh, I'm just, I'm asking now.
Well, here's the problem. You know, I went out and was doing due diligence on the building. And what I did say was that some of the offices are pretty decadent and that there may be some issues with veterans that are on assistance, food stamps, don't have jobs and they walk in to an executive office with 20-foot ceilings and huge windows in there and it may send the wrong perception. I said, I'm not sure about that. And I did have that conversation with them. But that doesn't mean they're too good for the veteran services. That's not what I said.
And then, Mr. Cordez, I apologize because that's the way it was relayed to us.
But you can understand my thinking that somebody is coming in. I know a veteran wants a job. They deserve a job, they deserve help, but sometimes the perception that we send, we got to watch out for that too. That we may be.
I understand. And, Mr. Cordez, I apologize. If you didn't make it, I'll stand right here and, man, you know, wouldn't tell you.
What I'm saying is, I made a statement similar to that, that for a different reason. My concern with the perception of people coming in for services. Sometimes we have to watch the message we send to them about what we're doing. And we're conscious that up here too. The, just for the record though, at least you know I was out there doing a little due diligence on the building.
Oh, I understand and I thank you for going to see the building.
Yeah. But, but, you know, the dialogue with the Realtor is concerning because now we have a Realtor playing both ends here that we have to negotiate a price if the board decides to buy that building and that's not good for either one of us.
No, I understand it. That's why I say it. But, and also, you saw the building, there's other place, there's other offices in that building that can be rented that the county gets the money from.
I'm.
Which, you know.
We're negotiating, Jose.
Yeah, we're not.
I'm done. I apologize.
Well, I want to bring up one last thing though too, you know, when we're talking about job and family services. Actually, Mr. Cordez, because me and you had multiple dialogues on this. And the question I have always asked, and I've asked this to veterans as well, what's the first thing that veterans are looking for when they get out of the service?
Well, I said in my opinion, I just said it here, is they want a job. Actually, I haven't met a veteran yet that thinks that they deserve something, they just want a fair opportunity.
Exactly. And that's what I brought up about being a partnership in job and family services, having the opportunity to locate a job. As far as reaching.
I didn't say about going over there.
No, I did. I did that. Is being able to help them with that. Now, going on, the other thing I did bring up, and this is actually from Don's suggestion, is actually instead of going through and spending money on a building for even services, if you put that up, it's around 24%. It's actually coming up with a way to create a mobile unit that would be able to go out and reach veterans in the southern part of the county.
It's in the process. It's in the process for 2015.
Well, that wasn't, when we talked about that at the budget hearing, that wasn't the discussion. Don brought that up to me. I thought that was an excellent idea to be able to reach them, to go through, to do your marketing, to improve your website, to improve the social media on there so people actually know that Lorraine County has a veteran services. Because the majority of them are going through.
I believe it was last meeting when, or that we spoke, you challenged us to improve outreach.
Yeah.
Okay? We went from a $10,000 budget on outreach to spending $125,000 already. I don't know if you've seen iHeartRadio, WGAR, the plugs we get on there. We did that comedy show which, which brought the veterans in with Bill Squires from the Alan Cox Show and we donated everything that was brought in to Second Harvest Food Bank.
Right.
And, but we're reaching them now. You challenged us and we're doing it.
And now, and on that too, now let's go back to the inside millage. What did I tell you about that? If you went through and you did outreach in order to get more veterans, I had no issues with approving that. Matter of fact, the board can't do anything. If you spend the money, I'm going through and out, reaching out to the veterans and providing the services.
But it's there now.
The only thing that we can, you know, reject on it is if you're going to go through and purchase a building.
But it's there and everything's being done and we're reaching who needs to be reached. And I'm not saying, I know none of us are miracle workers. It takes time to get stuff done.
Right.
You guys have had a nice outreach program this year. I've seen it everywhere.
So I have nothing else. I just wanted to.
And in fact, you were looking at the mobile sites, talking to Community College, they have a great new facility out there in Wellington and it's right down the street from.
Right there on 58.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be a great place to do it.
Well, I think one of the things that Don was talking about, and Don, I don't want to put words in your mouth, so if I'm misspoken, please say something, is actually creating a mobile unit where they can go to veteran events.
Yes. Do you know how Lorraine Public Library System has that Bookmobile?
Right.
That's what we're looking into, getting one of those and advertising, say in Wellington, hey, we'll be here, you know, this weekend to do claims in your area.
Yeah.
Whether it's at the VFW, that's what we're looking at for 2015.
That's great.
Very good.
And we can't work it overnight, as we know. I'm done, Mr. Williams. I just had a thing and I think Mr. Mackin wants to say something. I don't know if he's behind me.
Introduce yourself, Bob.
I'm Robert Mackin. I'm first vice president in the state of Ohio for veteran services for all 88 counties. And what we do, I've been there, most of the counties have their own building. We need somewhere where we can get our own building down and have the place where the veterans can meet, they can come. Out there on Abbey Road, it is an excellent location. We have over 500 veterans going to the college out there. But let me tell you one, a statistic. The whole state of Ohio spends on veterans' issues, $222 million. And how much does that bring into the state of Ohio every year, tax-free money? $4.2 billion a year comes into the state of Ohio, tax-free money for compensation for veterans.
From the VA claims, correct.
Right, from claims.
Just yesterday.
And another 2-point some billion is spent on facilities in here. So a total way over $6 billion comes into the state of Ohio. The more compensation, more veterans we get in and compensation raise that up, the money that we get off that half a mil, there's more money coming into the county, tax-free money where people are buying groceries, buying food, buying cars, buying this, the veterans are buying that.
If I can help you out.
And there, so.
Let me interrupt though. The statistics show $73 to every dollar spent in the state of Ohio is with return from out, from, with federal funding. That's exactly.
Yeah, it's $4.2 billion. That's the reason why the state of Ohio put the veterans' issues under the governor and the governor's cabinet. It's a very important entity coming into the state of Ohio. And we just need someplace where we can have our own building, get out of the welfare building and be there and be secure. We need the security and everything that we need. We need, we need areas where it's going to be all confidential when somebody comes in and speaks and everything. It's, that's what we need. And that building over there is a good building. There's, the price needs to be negotiated out. I'm relying on Jim to get that going. 20 years in the Navy, we need that building. And we have the money in our, in our budget to buy that building.
I hope the Realtor, I hope the Realtor doesn't.
The Board of Commissioners have to buy the building.
Well, well, we could lease, we could still go out and lease, so we can lease.
Let me suggest this on the building for a while, because I actually have a few things in my folders here to talk about. I think you heard me say the sale or purchase of real estate in my request for an executive session. We can't negotiate against ourselves.
So what you hear, just take it with a grain of salt because there's a lot of times there's positioning on things when you negotiate a price or a potential price. The last thing you want to do is go into a used car lot or a new car lot and say, I love this car. Hey, by the way, can you reduce the price after I love it? All right? This, we got to, we just got to tighten up a little bit with the, you know, the due diligence on something.
But I trust that everyone on the commission and all of you here will do the right thing for the veterans. Thank you very much.
And the one thing I do want to bring up is I actually spoke with veteran leaders in the county as well who are opposed to moving into that facility on Abbey Road.
Can I go back to my report?
Go back.
I thought you were here for budgetary issues. I really did. Jose had no clue about this other stuff, so. See, what else do we, oh, congra, pardon me?
I said, I'm sorry.
Not a problem. Also, I'd like to congratulate Mike Hallick, Columbia County Commissioner, is our new president of the CCAO.
We're friends on Facebook now.
We're friends on Facebook, yes.
He friended me yesterday.
He friended you? Okay.
Nice guy.
Yeah. Great conference, networking with everybody, new issues, legislative priorities presented onto 2015 with a new Senate and House. Also, I had sent out, all the Commissioners received preliminary budget stuff to go over. Couple issues that I had had our Budget Director work on preparing for a 2015 budget. Don't run off. We did take, my suggestion was to take the $1.3 million out of your budget for the new building because that's what the Commissioners do. Okay?
I'm not leaving there.
Okay. And then in regards to the Court of Common Pleas with the $3.26 million in rehabbing of the courthouse, I had Lisa remove that from this budget, Terry, because working all week to make the decision to move to the Middle Avenue property. Go ahead, Jim.
Did you, you also removed the $50,000, right?
Yes, $50,000 for the building maintenance also they put into that. That is the Commissioners' responsibility and we're getting on those issues.
Well, you know, they had $2 million to put towards the project if it went to the fifth floor. So hopefully they could take that $2 million and when the new software program becomes an issue that they could put that money towards that instead of a building.
The other one, Rodney Abecowski announced his retirement. He's going to be leaving here the end of the year. He had a bunch, you, actually, Bev, you presented the budget with the other young lady from Title. We just put the normal raises in there and took all that additional till there is a new clerk of courts appointing, whether that's you or someone else that actually go over the running of the office. Ron's not there. His budget, you know, a new clerk of court may have a different direction to go in, so. What else did we have down here? The sheriff, we had an adjustment, as you saw, towards his budget presentation. There was concerns on where his fiscal did something. Our Budget Director, our County Administrator working through our numbers, they had doubled up a number. It ended up being a few hundred thousand dollars less than what was-
There was, there was small transposes there, so.
Right.
And he's aware of it.
Right, he is. Right. Lisa told me to talk to the budget person and spoke to the sheriff on that, so changing that. So, I mean, for next week, I mean, we've got to get, and we've always done the last seven or eight years, a temporary budget where we fund the county except we do quarterly on the payrolls. If you guys can spend some time looking on this, the only additional expense that had to come up with, I was speaking with Judge Walther for past two or three weeks with the money from the Green Acres. There may need some money for the OESU extension. As you know, we give $16,400 through our, $17,400 through our solid waste of the recycling efforts and there's approximately $55,000 and some dollars left in the Green Acres Fund that can be used towards the extension. And Judge Walther is looking into another avenue of funding. He's going to get back to me by the end of this week, but we may have to come up with a small portion. And what I did is I put $40,000. Here's a line I'm not knowing, hoping it being a lot less.
It better be a lot less.
I still put it in there that we had no OESU extension, which would allow for 4H. And again, we'll know more numbers by the end of the week. Judge Walther is working on that.
What is yours?
When we started the investigation, I asked that we have a third party come in and actually do the investigation instead of having our Sheriff Department and the Prosecutor handle it. It didn't go that way. But through the report, they, in April, they stated that, you know, they're still investigating because they had some missing evidence with guns. And then that went into adult probation. And with the adult probation, there were some issues that came out with an account that was founded, a private checking account that was set up in 1991. And it was closed in 2009 with nearly $400,000. And with that, you know, the sheriff concluded his investigation. The Prosecutor had it. And we had some issues that could potentially be civil rights that were violated, possible misuse of government funds. And through our meetings with the Prosecutor, he stated he was going to go through and contact the Attorney General's Office. I contacted, I'm sorry, the State Auditor's Office. I contacted them. I contacted BCI. I contacted the State Auditor, spoke with them. And the week of Thanksgiving, I also spoke with the FBI. The FBI is interested. I gave them a brief scenario of what was going on, the two issues I thought were important, misuse of government funds and potential civil liberty violations. They had picked up the case. I just wanted to give you an update on that and let you know what's going on. I think it's important that the public's aware of it because the investigation has been going on for over a year and they haven't moved forward on anything. But it's just, since next week will be my last meeting. I just wanted the general public to understand what was going on, where it's at, and that I did take steps to make sure that everything would be thoroughly investigated. And talking with the FBI yesterday, because I told them I was going to come out here and state it, they did say they do have the case and that they are looking into it. Hopefully, my assumptions are wrong. I'm not an attorney. I'm looking at the Ohio Revised Code and under what I see and some of the statements that were made to me, I have a lot of red flags that came up. So we'll wait and see, but I appreciate all the input on it and just wanted to give you an update because I stated in that meeting that I would reach out to the feds. And I know that the Prosecutor didn't think that the feds would get involved. But after telling them, just an overview, a general overview, they do, they met with Kavanaugh at a meeting and then they came in that following Monday and actually picked up the case, case information, I should say. All right, end of my report.
Next Wednesday is our last meeting at 9:30. Board Correspondents?
Will the reading be waived?
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kala?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Public Comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning?
Mary Rivers.
Thank you. You too.
Motion to go executive session is outlined by the County Administrator.
Second.
Ms. Kala?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th Floor Downtown Aleria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.